Welcome to the Town of Herndon Public Hearing, January 29, 2019.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out in the weather to see us tonight. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I wanted to make a quick announcement about one of the items on the consent agenda. It's item number 20. There were some minor editorial revisions to Resolution 19G15. We had a misspelling, and we also deleted the reference to who would serve as chair as the committee will select their chair, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. We have three sets of minutes on our agenda this week. Is there a motion to approve the January 8th work session minutes?
So moved.
Second. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the January 9th Town Council swearing-in minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in fa— oh.
Yes.
Yes?
If you haven't watched it and you're in the public.
Oh.
You might want to check out the swearing-in. It was really different this year, and it was very nice. Just wanted to tell you that.
Thank you.
Good format.
Thank you. I like the format as well, and I'm glad that you guys did, too. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? That motion carries. And finally, is there a motion to approve the January 15th public hearing minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? And any abstentions? Okay. All right. We do have one presentation this evening for African-American History Month, and we have invited Dorian and Leah Baker from Life Ticket Church, who were planning to attend, but I'm not sure I see them in the audience yet. No? They may be delayed because of weather. Okay. With concurrence of counsel, can we skip this? If they come in, we will jump back to this, and if they don't make it this evening, we'll try to do it next time? Does that work?
That'll be fine. Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay, so we'll stay tuned. Stay ready, Vice Mayor. So that brings us right to comments. Mr. Town Manager, do you have any comments for us this evening?
Just the fact of the timing of the storm. We have an evening crew out on the streets hitting it hard right now, and just be patient. Well, I'm sure we'll hit you. So they're on their way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKinnon, we'll start with you.
Just one brief comment regards to our orientation last Wednesday. I just want to thank everyone for being there. I want to thank the Town Manager and staff that were there. I know they took some time out of their schedules to make sure we understand our rules and responsibilities. And I want to thank the council members for really good questions and good dialogue. I thought it was very informative and learned a lot from other people in regards to thought process and things. I thought it was really good, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a different format as well, so we appreciate the change. Ms. Friedrichs.
I wanted to thank the members of the Board of Zoning Appeals and the staff for their patience at the last hearing, the BZA hearing, and I was really delighted to see so many town residents and also town non-residents come out and give us their feedback. This is what a town looks like, and we should all be glad that we are participating in democracy at the most basic level. I also hope we can keep in mind that the BZA is formed of volunteers who are town members who are just trying to make sure that everything goes according to our ordinances, which they did not pass.
Thank you. Mr. DeKalb, do you have any comments for us?
First thing is, for the Town Council orientation, definitely it was informative. It was good, and we enjoyed it a lot and learned a lot. And also, I want to commend our department heads. Our department heads are a great source of knowledge, and that's what makes our job easier. Thank you so much. And another thing is, Councilmember Friedrich, also Vice Mayor Olum, and myself, we went to Legislative Day in Richmond. It was quite informative. We learned a lot and also got a chance to actually see the Honorable Governor, Mr. Northam, so it was great. Thank you.
Thank you for representing us so well, all of you. Thank you. Ms. Baker? No comments. Okay. Mr. Delagula?
Yeah, first of all, thanks to the folks for clearing those streets. Very nicely done. I'll just reiterate, it was my first interaction with the staff at the orientation, and personally, I could not be more impressed with the leadership and the department heads, their focus, and quite frankly, their dedication. I think we were done at about 10:30 PM that night, so kudos out to the staff and certainly to the leadership, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I'm throwing things. There we go. Yes, the trip down for VML day was very interesting. It was great hearing from the governor and also from the Secretary of Transportation. I've been hearing about the possible tolls going in on 81, so it was very interesting having her explain how this is going to work, should they decide to do that. You might want to check it out. It sounds—it's nothing compared to what we're paying on the toll road here, because they have so many trucks using that road, and that would be very helpful to get some additional revenue to help keep up on the upkeep of that. And also, when we got to go into the Senate chamber, we got to see our Lieutenant Governor and our new Senator Boyceco hard at work down there on the floor, so that was interesting to get to do that. And she caught a picture of us, so she knew that the Herndon Town Council was down there watching. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to mention a couple of things. One, I just wanted to remind everyone that there is a translate feature on our herndon-vaa.gov website. The translate button is near the upper right-hand corner of the website. It's not perfect. I think it is working through Google Translate, but it is a good first step in reaching various people in our community that speak other languages, so please let your friends and neighbors know about that if they don't already. And also, it's hard to believe it's time for this again, but the Mayor's Volunteer Appreciation Reception will be held on Sunday, April 7. And recently, the council and I sent out a letter to the area clubs, schools, organizations, businesses, requesting nominations for those annual awards. You can visit the town's website for an application to make nominations in any of the three categories, which are Outstanding Volunteers, Distinguished Service, and the Distinguished Corporate Service Award. And nominations are due by Friday, March 1st, so we can't wait to see who's nominated this time around. And of course, thank you to DPW. Stay tuned on the website for updates on snow removal, but they seem to be pretty ahead of it so far. And I don't know about your kids, if you have them at home, but mine are putting ice down the toilet and wearing their pajamas upside—or inside out, hoping for a snow day tomorrow, so we'll see how that works. Growing up in the South, I didn't know about those things. Did you? Yeah, I learned when I started teaching school here, so. So with that, this brings us to comments from the audience. This is the portion of the agenda that is reserved for items that are not a public hearing item, and that does include our consent agenda items and the general item, which is the Town Council guidance on the budget, and also the T-Mobile Technologies contract. So if you're speaking on either of those items or anything else you would like to bring to our attention, I invite you forward. I see Ms. Glakis is already ready. Come on down. You have three minutes. State your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, try to wrap it up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Town Council Members. I'm Barbara Glakis, 935 Barton Oaks Place. I did want to address briefly the last week's—the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. I think there are some vagaries in our zoning ordinance with had to do with this issue that led to a difficult split decision on our Board of Zoning Appeals regarding house concerts. So I don't know—I have no doubt that most of us support the arts and even support house concerts, but I believe the zoning ordinance needs to be improved to specifically address house concerts. For example, house concerts need to be added into our zoning ordinance and well-defined. Also, addressing the term "commercial," indoor entertainment, I think needs to be better defined or clarified. Also, addressing if something is not specifically mentioned in the zoning ordinance, like right now, our zoning ordinance doesn't have the term "house concerts" in it. If it's not specifically mentioned, does that mean it should be opt-in or opt-out, whether or not the use should be approved? Also needs to consider about the possible future proliferation of house concerts and how that might impact neighborhoods. Should it be a special exception, for example, that something like we do for daycare centers? You know, whether or not we have to consider different factors, such as parking, noise, traffic, or whatever. Also, we need to ensure there's a defined difference between a person who has a private party in their house that happens to have live music in it, or cookout, or whatever, as opposed to a person who has—who uses their house as a venue for regular house concerts. I mean, that distinction might need to be made. Whatever you decide, I just think some of these issues need to be addressed. I think the zoning ordinance should be updated as soon as possible to hit on some of these things, so it's not so difficult for both the BZA and the person who might get a violation, you know, to go through this process in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Yes, sir.
Steve Mitchell, 1291 Monroe Street. I'm here to address some comments that were made in the last public session. I think it was during the part for the ordinance, the special license for Herndon Junction, and a citizen made a comment about how he felt that the inspection services in the town were not up to par. And in that comment, he also referenced a building that I have very—a lot of concerns with. So I'm a lot more informed than the citizenry is of what's going on. I can tell you that there have been no problems with the inspection services from this town. We are very lucky to have, as a building official, John Orson, his dedication, and everything else. So I'm just here to clarify the record that there are—in my particular instance, as referred to, that there had been some inspection issues. There are no inspection issues from the Town of Herndon with regards to that building, and I just want to let you all know that, and you're very lucky to have him as a building official. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on any item that's not our public hearing items? Anyone? Okay. Oh, yes, sir. Yeah. Vicki's told them. Okay. Yeah, we'll call on you when we get to that point. Last call. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Okay, thank you very much. That does bring us to our first public hearing. It's ordinance 18035 to authorize the encroachment on the front stoops of several addresses on Monroe Street, which is part of the Junction Square development. I will open the public hearing. This item was continued from the council's December 11th and January 15th public hearings. I believe first I'm going to call on the Town Attorney to provide an update, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Irish from DPW. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This will be brief. As you stated, this ordinance was continued twice to straighten out and verify some matters regarding ownership and responsibility for the structures that were encroaching into the public access easement, and then to verif—the last time it was continued to verify whether or not 711 Monroe Street actually did, in fact, encroach. It does, by less than half an inch, but it does. A couple of changes. Adjustments were made to the ordinance that you have before you to clarify who is to provide the insurance to the town, and I think it is a very clear now. And regarding the actual encroachments, I would now pass it over to John Irish to explain those.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Irish?
Thank you, Lisa. Mayor and Town Council Members, this particular ordinance, as we've mentioned in the past, is regarding the location of some encroachments of the structures of those lots, as you see in exhibit up here, and they are very minor in the sense of the size of them. They're between two to four inches, with the exception of the one Lisa mentioned that's even smaller than that. The encroachments occur in time to time with the fact that in this particular part of town, this zoning require—does not require—it has a zero setback allowed, and therefore, when the construction of these units is done, you have very small tolerances, and because of the way that things actually happen in the field, we do not have an opportunity to review the actual locations of these built items until such time as they complete them and they send to the town what's called a Building Location Survey. At that time, a certified surveyor prepares the document you see as the exhibit, and that's when we see things like this, and therefore, we come to you and support the license agreement for the encroachment of these stoops. It does not affect any of the town's ability to maintain the sidewalk or the public streetscape, and believe that it should be a possibility that we go forward with this.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for staff? Any questions? Sign me followed by the Vice Mayor. Sorry, Ms. Friedrichs.
Mr. Irish, thank you for that. I just want to clarify—I've asked you these questions a number of times, and I just want to make sure that we say them on camera. First of all, the encroachments don't impede on ADA compliance, correct?
They do not.
And the land that is being encroached on, we do not own. It is an easement granted to us. They own it.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor.
Covered my questions. Great minds.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, so we will call on comments from the audience. Rules are the same. State your name and address for the record. Up to three minutes, and try to wrap up when the red light comes on. Mr. Mitchell?
This is actually the ordinance that got me going last week. When I watched the hearing and I was listening to this, I just want to make sure that you all understand. It always concerns me about licenses and things of that nature. As a homeowner and when you've transferred real property and things of that nature, how much are we muddying up the title as it moves forward? Because what really would concern me if I was a purchaser of one of these units is that we can revoke this license at any time. Are you revoking it against the Homeowners Association, or is it going to impact the people that actually own these homes? Because this document will never be recorded into Fairfax County Land Records. The only way for someone to research this and find out that it really exists is the fact if they went through the process, but in a regular title search, you're not going to pick this up. And I think there are better ways or different ways to handle this, whether you reduce the size of your easement by six inches to accommodate this, or there's multiple ways to look at this. I don't think we've looked downstream far enough to understand all the implications, and nobody's thought this out, but who knows 20 years from now with somebody that might be mad at somebody, for all I know, you know? So I would just caution you, and obviously, these people have thought about it. They probably want it, but maybe give it a second thought and defer, just to make sure that, you know, that we have crossed our eyes and—crossed not all our eyes, crossed all our Ts—to make sure that we aren't just making an issue that becomes an issue at a later date.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing and move to council level for discussion and action.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve—I'm sorry, I don't have the—150306. 18035 to approve—to authorize encroachment of the front stoop in the mentioned property. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Ms. Friedrich, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Discussion on the motion. Ms. Friedrichs.
I know that—I know that the Town Attorney has addressed the question that Mr. Mitchell brought up. I honestly cannot remember why we made the choice we made. Is it appropriate for me to ask at this time?
Certainly. Would you like to clarify that, Madam Town Attorney? Thank you. You took my question this time.
The town has three choices once something like this is discovered. The first choice is to make the builder or the owner tear the structure out. Not a good option most of the time, in fact, probably all of the time. The other option is to require the builder, developer, or owner, in some cases, if it's possible, to go through the amendment process, to amend the plans, to show the location of the easement in a different—in a different, what do I want to say, measurement? That would require us, as Mr. Mitchell suggested, narrowing our easement a little bit. They wouldn't grant us the entire public easement. In this case, it's small, but as far as the amendment process, it would be somewhat detailed for the developer to go through. At the point that these—that these small encroachments became apparent, the developer was trying to close on those properties. We weighed all of the options and chose this option. Certainly doesn't foreclose any other option if council were not to act on this ordinance this evening, but those are the options that the Code of Virginia grants to a locality with regard to encroachments. We do, as you know, there is insurance on this. There is an agreement between the town, the Homeowners Association, and the developer, Tradition Homes. The HOA documents disclose that there may be—the HOA documents, which are recorded in land records in Fairfax County, do disclose that there may be encroachments. It doesn't disclose this particular encroachment, but it discloses that there may be encroachments and that the purchaser accepts those encroachments. We certainly, as a town, do not—myself does not seek to represent those individuals with regard to any legal rights, responsibilities, or liabilities they may have. My job is to represent the town, so I would say as far as what's available to the town, we've laid it out, and I am satisfied that what you have before you this evening is the best option for this particular situation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion. Ms. Olum?
I think what former Councilmember Mitchell brought up is make sure you keep all your documents when you close on a property, because whenever you've had something unusual in a document 20 years down the road, if you don't have the paperwork, then you've got to pay to have everything researched all over again, so it's not going to help someone in 20 years, but if whoever hangs on to their paperwork, it'll make life a little easier for them. But I agree, this is the best way forward and most cost-effective at this point.
Thank you. Other discussion on the motion? Anyone? Yep. Okay, I concur. Thank you for reiterating that for us, Madam Town Attorney, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Mitchell. Going forward, we will make sure that we continue to look at all the options and move forward in the best way possible, but I always appreciate your comments. So there was a motion to approve made by Ms. Friedrich, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? And that motion carries. The next public hearing is ordinance 19001, first of the year, to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a second lease amendment to T-Mobile Northeast LLC to revise the approved equipment list and increase the rent at the town's Spring Knoll Drive water tower. I will open the public hearing, and first I will recognize our Town Attorney to outline the lease process.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very simply, there is a—just as there is a process to satisfy encroachments, there is a process that localities, municipalities have to go through with regard to selling, leasing, franchising certain property for more than five years. In this case, the town previously entered into a lease agreement with T-Mobile to lease space on the town's Spring Knoll Drive water tower. That was back in 2015—I'm sorry, 2008. It was a 15-year agreement. It expires in 2024. That lease was amended back in 2015, and now T-Mobile seeks to amend it to add some equipment. In this—and also, we were asking for a rent increase. In this particular case, unlike when a lease is originally granted, there are no bids required. So those of you that have been on council for a while may be looking for a bid. This is an amendment. We have already taken the bid from them for the lease. No amendments required, however. There is a roll call vote. And I'll turn it over now to Tammy Chastain, Deputy Public Works Director.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening. I really don't have much more to add to what Lisa said. It is the Second Amendment to this for T-Mobile, and as she mentioned, it—the main parts that are going to be changed is just ancillary equipment, as well as the addition of a generator in an already existing enclosure. And that's pretty much all for this one.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff? Questions? Mr. McKenna?
I just have one that I asked last week, but in regards to the—by doing this, it doesn't reset the lease, correct? It's a—
No, the lease still expires in 2024.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Ms. Chastain? Okay, thank you. Well, this is a public hearing, so we'll call on comments from the audience, and just as before, state your name and address for the record, and when the red light comes on, please try to wrap up. Yes, sir?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Jim McDonough. I work for NBNC and represent T-Mobile. I'm here, you know, for your—you know, to answer any potential questions that there may be. If not, I'll turn it over to the—for questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for the representative? Ms. Friedrichs.
Sir, just wanted to know what the ancillary equipment is.
The ancillary equipment is we are swapping out some antennas. It just really is a matter of upgrading the technology so that your phone can do all the things that—I'll just say—that my children, who are in their 20s, like to do. It's more than just, you know, operate a handset and make a phone call, as well as Ms. Chastain, I believe it is, said, they will be installing a generator within the existing enclosure. That's not ancillary equipment, but just to make sure that there's that. So that's basically it.
Thank you, sir.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, move to council for discussion and action. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move on ordinance 19-0-01.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Discussion on the motion. Anyone? Ms. Friedrichs?
Given that all this involves is more equipment—that's fairly standard—and more rent, I don't see any problem with it at all.
Thank you. Other comments? Nope. Okay, I concur. We're looking forward to continuing this relationship and providing better service for our residents and the people who come through town. This does require a roll call vote, so I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My apologies, I have a cold. Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Dal Ekola?
Yes.
Councilmember DeKalb?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olum?
Yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up is ordinance 19002 to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a second lease amendment to T-Mobile Northeast LLC for additional ground space to revise the approved equipment list and increase the rent at the town's Alabama Drive Water Tower facility, and I believe it's the same process, so I'll call on Ms. Chastain for the staff report.
Sure. This one, as you mentioned, is at the Alabama site, which the initial lease was in 2009 and amended again in 2015. This one also expires in 2024. The Second Amendment for this particular one is ground space for a generator, which will include the concrete pad and enclosure this time that's not existing yet, so this will also increase the rent as well.
Okay. Thank you. Is there—are there questions for Ms. Chastain? Okay, thank you. Well, this is a public hearing, so I'll— Well, this is a public hearing, so I'll call on comments from the audience once again. I don't know if our representative, did you, did you want to speak again, sir, on this one, or no additional comments?
No additional comments, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just want to make sure you had the chance on. Mr. Downer?
Yes.
State your name and address for the record, please. I'm going to make sure we know who you are.
Mr. Downer, 15 Branch Drive, number 308, Herndon, Virginia. This actually applies to seven, eight, and nine, and I just want to make sure that the applicant understands that any equipment that's mounted on the tower should be painted in the same color as the tower.
He's nodding, so.
And also, the question would be if they do have to submit anything in the enclosure, change in the enclosure, if it's going to generate an HPRB decision, or if that's something that the town can handle. But I just want to make sure they realize that we're still in business.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
This, this particular site is outside of the HPRB, but if ARB needs to be involved, they will be, but I don't think that's the case. Is there further discussion on the motion? Sorry, is it, getting confused. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this item? No? Okay. I will close the public hearing, move to council level for discussion and action. Madam Mayor? Yes, ma'am. I move approval of ordinance 19-0-2.
I'll second that.
It's the Bill and Sheila Show tonight. We have a motion to approve made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Mr. McKenna. Discussion on the motion. No? All right. Thank you very much. Seeing none, I will close the discussion and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Delagula?
Yes.
Councilmember DeKalb?
Yes.
Councilmember Friedrichs?
Yes.
Councilmember McKenna?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Olem?
Yes.
Mayor Merkel?
Yes, that motion carries, and we appreciate you making the trip all the way from Maryland to be here with us this evening. Thank you. That brings us to our general items, which includes Resolution 19G05, which provides the town manager with town council guidance for the FY 2020 budget. I will recognize our town manager, Bill Ashton, to outline the proposed resolution, and this is our official opening to budget season, so lay it on us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. What you have before you tonight is a resolution that was first born back on January 8th, when we came to you with a discussion item to discuss where you were and where your minds were around the budget development process. And we put together a resolution that meets those things that were discussed that night. They include funding the 2035 Vision, specifically focusing on sustainability, focusing on downtown redevelopment, focusing on an art center, focusing on technology. Those three focuses out of the 2035 Vision you specifically are identified in this resolution for us to develop a budget around. Then we focused on employees, which makes up probably two-thirds of our budget or employment-based costs. You were interested in skills development of our workforce, education of our workforce, and leadership development of our junior leaders. You also were very interested in maintaining a competitive employment position in the northern Virginia marketplace, which is highly competitive, and especially in areas of public safety. You also wanted me to maintain a strong fiscal position, address the rising costs of service delivery that we've been talking about for a while, and it certainly came up at the January 8th work session. And you, you offered up an opportunity for us to reexamine our revenue options as a result of the rising service delivery costs. You asked me to remove the linkage of the 1% of the meals tax from specific earmarked items. Not to say that we're not going to fund those items, because actually, a lot of this has to do with the downtown redevelopment, which also remain a priority. It just gives us a little bit more flexibility in how it gets applied. You also suggested we need to revisit the parks and rec cost recovery model. This budget, we're going to attempt to do that. You want us to continue to prepare for the costs associated with us supporting a metro rail station here in Herndon, and the development costs of the parcels in and around that metro station. We are going to address that. And then finally, you also wanted us to take a look at how we do our lifecycle maintenance, how we replace vehicles, equipment, how we do major building maintenance, and start putting that more in an operational bent on it rather than a capital bent, since it is, actually, costs of doing business are associated with this. This budget will, we will certainly attempt to reflect that as well. So those are the priorities that I took away from the January 8th work session, that we've repackaged back into a resolution for you to hand to me as my marching orders as we move forth. With that, Madam Mayor, back to you.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff on this? This is a time for questions. Then I will, I will, it's also a time, I guess, yes, for questions. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Motion?
Motion to what?
Motion to direct the town manager on the guidance that we provided for the 2020.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion to approve made by Councilmember Delagula.
I'll second that.
Mr. McKenna? Thank you very much. Discussion on the motion. Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, this was a very thorough initial start, so thank you for, again, the dedication of the staff and the detail that everyone showed to do this, certainly on council. We're not going to agree on everything, but I'm really looking forward to getting this done for the folks in Herndon, so thanks for your commitment to it, and your staff.
Thank you. Mr. McKenna?
With, with this resolution, those watching at home and here with the, with the winter weather, this is, I guess you can say it's the opening salvo or kickoff for the budget. So I want to remind everyone, please, any suggestions, any thoughts, please let us know. This is because we start having meetings with the staff and everything else. In order for us to make an effective budget, we have to know what you need. I said it last year, you can't make a spreadsheet work if you don't know what you want to put in it. So I'm very excited about this, and please let us know what you're thinking. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Vice Mayor?
I just want to thank the town manager for putting this together so succinctly. Very nice, nicely done. Covered all the bases in a very small amount of words. Great. And the other thing, I concur with my colleague. I love to talk to people. If you want to call me and talk to me about budget issues or any town issues, I'm always available. Maybe not when I'm working, but, you know, give me a call, we'll set up a time, text me, email me. I'm pretty easy to track down. There are no other Olem's, it's me and my son. So if you can spell our name, you can find us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Further discussion on the motion? Ms. Baker?
Yeah, I'll just add to that. I think we've had some really healthy discussions during work sessions, really productive, and of course, the town council orientation. I think this is, I think this is a lot of content already. And of course, what's coming up next is our two-by-two meetings, right, where each of us will meet with town staff and our finance director to really dig into this. And as all of us have said, we are really eager for more content and more, or I should say, more feedback, more input. So like, like, again, several of us said, come to any of us, come to all of us, send a note to the town clerk, come here. If you don't want to come here, I mean, email. There's lots of ways to get us your input before you see the final budget, right, because you won't really see kind of the draft budget for a couple more months. So really want that feedback along the way. There's not, there's usually not major changes, but, so you can look at what's already in it and what we've been doing for the past several years. Taxes are going to be a discussion point this year. I'll just be the first one to say that. We have not raised taxes in a long time, so I do think you're going to see discussion on taxes in this budget season that you haven't heard in several years, because we haven't had to, or we've been able to really keep that tight. So again, we really want your input and feedback over the next couple months. Thanks.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. DeKalb?
Just wanted to say, it's a very good, high-level overview of the budget, but as we move forward, we'll definitely discuss further and come with the details, what goes inside the budget. And obviously, you know, we, as Councilmember Delagula said, we may not agree on everything, but we will make sure the budget that we propose will definitely make sure the, it best represents the town of Herndon and our constituents. So this is the high-level overview, but absolutely, we will work, we will brainstorm, we will bring the ideas, we will talk to our constituents, we will discuss amongst the council members and the department to make sure the budget we bring forward will best represent the town of Herndon. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Friedrichs?
We're already receiving some feedback from citizens. We got a letter the other day from somebody who was very concerned about a high school band, I'll just put it right out there. So the budget of any organization or any government entity is a reflection of the values that we share, and what Councilmember DeKalb said is true, and also what my other colleagues have said. We want to hear what you have to say, and we are going to, our staff is going to deliver a very tight, well-thought-out, comprehensive budget, and I think you'll all be very proud of it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I concur with my colleagues. We do want to hear from you. This is the high level, what the council is thinking, that we've heard from you, but this is your budget. And I think that it's going to be an exciting budget season this time, there's a lot of exciting things happening. We have a council that I think largely agrees on the big-picture items. It's always the nitty-gritty details of how to make it work, but we'll work through that, and, you know, maybe we're wrong. If we're going in the wrong direction with this budget guidance, please let us know as soon as possible, because we do want to hear from you. And all of the ways that our colleagues said to reach out to us, please do that. If you want your comments on the record, please email it to town.clerk@herndon-vaa.gov. She sends it immediately to all the council members and relevant department heads a lot of times during budget season. Posting on Facebook about it is not the best way to get our attention. I know that there's a lot of great conversation, I'm not discouraging that at all, but we don't always see those comments. We don't comment very much on Facebook, because it's, it does have the potential to become part, you know, on-the-record comment. So please, if you want us to hear about it, cut and paste that conversation and email it to the town clerk, because there are a lot of good discussions, but we're missing some of them, I know. So I'm just going to throw that plea out there to all of you guys. So looking forward to it, and I'm done talking. So we had a motion to approve made by Mr. Delagula, seconded by Mr. McKenna.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those opposed? All right. And finally, we have one last general item. This is a resolution 19G06, to amend the existing Tyler Technologies contract 13-04 to add the InnerGov module. And our IT director is here, and after he speaks, we're going to know what that means. We know exactly what that means, I just want to make sure everybody here understands.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. So basically, back in the 2018, we started the big, took, we started a big transition from our financial data to the Munis, Tyler Munis. This is where the contract was structured and data was migrated to the cloud environment, hosted the Tyler environment. Now, with recent changes and our current system is no longer supported, so we took a task where we discovered, we spent time with Department of Public Works zoning and permitting, to find out the replacement, the suitable replacement for existing, existing software. So we, basically, we organized a group of the key staff members to obtain the input and serve the review panel. We selected, we reviewed Tracket, CityWorks, and InnerGov. InnerGov is part of the Tyler, that's our, that's going to be permitting and zoning information software that's going to be fully hosted. It's going to be aligned with 2035 Vision, moving from paper to paperless forms, full mobility, and it's going to allow staff to be more efficient, share the information with the requesters, and track each case on the case-to-case basis. And so part of this is to tie this with existing Tyler contract that we have, and that way, we'll have a one whole solution that's going to provide a town with the full software suite.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there questions for staff? Mr. DeKalb?
Yes, I have a few questions. So first question is, who is actually the end user of the InnerGov? Who, who uses it? Is that the...
For, for, for town, it's, it's going to be split between three departments, right? You're going to have Department of Public Works, so they're going to be, part of that is going to be zoning, community development, and some of that is going to be part of the town shop. So basically, all of the parts of the, so a big part is going to be zoning, they're going to do all the enforcement, then planning and permitting. So those are, those are going to be the main services we're going to offer the first year. As the time goes on, we're going to be evaluating the rest of the offerings of the InnerGov and see if we can streamline any of the new solutions that come out.
Okay, and is this, correct me if I'm wrong, so public is also using it to upload their documents or whatever they have electronically, right?
Correct. So the idea is to have, in aligning with 2035 Vision and sustainability and environmentally friendly, to reduce a lot of that paper application stuff. So part of these are big plans, they're going to be electronically submitted, they're going to go through the year review. We should be able to share that information with the Fairfax County Fire Department or anybody who needs to review that in electronic format.
Okay.
When these inspectors go on a site, they will have a mobile device, they will be able to produce the records, look it up, share it with the requestor, and submit that from the site, take the pictures, upload that, and have actually a case going to be uploaded and updated as they go. There's no need for them to write any papers, to submit any plans, go back to the office, right? So in theory, they should be able to do everything on the field, while they're talking to the requestor or whoever made the submission, and then come back and update the case with notes or anything else.
So it comes with GUI for the users, end users, the public, to upload, very user-friendly, right?
Correct. It's very user-friendly. So again, right, there's no, so it's going to be a web interface for them to fill out the application. They're going to have a chance to upload their, we are selecting a couple different solutions. One is for year review, BlueBean is the, one of the standards that's being used across the state of Virginia, Fairfax County. But they should be also to be able to upload any Adobe and any other documents they need. And again, if inspector is in the field and they take the picture, they should be able to upload that picture as well and attach it to that case.
Okay, and I'm asking this question for the public record as well. So we are migrating data from our legacy system to the new one, right?
Correct.
So it also provides the data migration, data integration, and also archiving feature for, I mean, past records to go through.
Yes, yes, for historical purposes, yeah. Being part of the town, right, so transparency is very important, and record-keeping as well. So everything that we have currently in, as a part of our records, will be transferred. Now, we'll make a decision what cases will, will, will be archived for just look up for historical record, and what cases will be in the system so they could be referenced going back. And again, this ties back to our Tyler solution, Munis, which holds all the property information, tax, and, and others. So it will, it will provide a centrally managed portal or place where you can look up any records, and everything will be tied together.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, sir. Other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this is a general item, so I will entertain a motion for 19G06.
Madam Mayor, I move on 19-G-06.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by Ms. Baker. Discussion on the motion.
I thought the staff did a really good job with the presentation last week, answered a lot of questions. Mr. DeKalb, great job as well. Three of us are in technology for our jobby jobs, and one of them used to be in technology, so I'm very comfortable with this, and I think it's a, it's a good idea, and it will actually help reduce costs long-term because of the way that we're using storage and things of that nature, so I'm very excited about that.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
Yeah, I would just second that, and I literally did second that, didn't I? Yeah, you know, just watching how the Tyler Technology implementation has improved just the efficiency of staff, which is certainly a big part of our vision and what we're trying to do, I think this is just one more extension and example of that. So thank you for researching and recognizing that this is the right, the right thing to do for our, our folks, our citizens, and our businesses.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Delagula?
Just want to point out for the folks at home and in the audience, at the work session, we grilled our colleague here pretty well, so the reason maybe some of you wonder why we're not asking the questions, we ask them in the work sessions. I encourage everyone to access the audios, they are on the public website, so every discussion in the work sessions are now available. And again, it's just to be a little bit more productive and make these meetings...